And I am calling this meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Santinas?
Here.
Mayor Garza?
Here. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. All right, this evening will be led in our invocation by our honorable Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Dan Coops.
Okay, let's bow for a word of prayer. Father God, you are the ultimate healer. Father, we come to you to pray for those who are infected by the virus. We pray for not only their healing, but for them to be comforted while they heal. Please heal every cell in their body, every integral part of their being. Provide them with the medical care they need. Provide the psychological relief as they have pressure in their possible unemployment and monetary concerns. We also pray for those who are caring for the sick. We pray blessings upon all the caregivers and the first responders, the fire, the sheriff, as they do their best to protect and nurture those that are in dire health. We ask for your guidance in this meeting being conducted tonight. We ask to make Bellflower a better place and a safe place for all of our residents, and we ask that you be with us in all decisions we make this evening. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. That was wonderful. Before I go off to city council announcements, I wanted to announce that there's going to be one item that I'm going to be pulling out of order. So I am going to be pulling item number 13A, and I'm going to be putting that to the end of the council meeting. So again, item 13A. So with that, let's move on to city council announcements, and I will start that off. So my announcement this evening is, it's a good one. Over the last couple of weeks, there has been a virtual poll on the city of Bellflower website to vote for a name for our upcoming temporary shelter. There were three options that the voters had a choice on, and those were, number one was Bellflower Cares, number two was New Hope, and number three was The Bridge. And after two weeks of collecting votes from over 323 participants, the results are in. So I am happy to announce that the name of the Bellflower Temporary Shelter is New Hope. So with that, we thank those who engaged and helped our city of Bellflower make this important decision. At the end, it's your decision. The New Hope Temporary Shelter is slated to open in May. And on a personal note, special thanks to Councilmember Raymond Hamada for his recommendation of New Hope, an absolutely appropriate name. So again, thank you so much for that. Next announcement is by our Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Safer At Home Order was updated April 10 and is now in effect until April, until May 15. As the COVID-19 pandemic continues to spread, the California Department of Public Health issued a face covering guidance. They are recommending Californians to wear cloth face coverings in public settings when conducting essential activities, especially in areas of significant community-based transmission, such as grocery stores and the like. Individuals should also continue practicing social distancing along with washing your hands frequently. To learn more about the face covering guidance, please visit www.cdph.caledonia.gov. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Coops. Councilmember Ray Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor Garza. Okay, scammers are taking advantage of fears surrounding the COVID-19 virus. The Federal Trade Commission has provided some tips to help you keep the scammers away. One, hang up on robocalls. Scammers are using illegal robocall pitches to scam coronavirus treatments and/or ask for your personal information, like your social security number and bank information. Ignore the online offers for the COVID-19 vaccines and vaccinations and home test kits. There are no FDA authorized home test kits for the coronavirus. And three, do not respond to phone calls, texts, email about checks from the government. Anyone who tells you that they can get you the money now is a scammer. The federal government most likely already has the information it needs to send you a relief check. Thank you, Mayor Garza.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ray Dutton. Next up, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. As part of the city's, city of Bellflower's response to COVID-19, the Parks and Recreation Staff will be conducting wellness check phone calls with Bellflower seniors registered in current programs. These calls provide a safe and convenient way to check on the well-being of our seniors, and also to assess their current needs, and then also connect them to resources. If a senior cannot be reached for a prolonged period of time, staff will coordinate an onsite check with the Public Safety Department. So for before. And then for more information on the program for it to register, please call 562-866-8614. Stay safe and take care of seniors. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Councilmember Sunny Santinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Los Angeles County has opened up a drive-up COVID-19 testing site in the city of Bellflower. The testing site is located at the parking lot of the Bellflower Civic Center, located at 16600 Civic Center Drive, Bellflower, California. Any resident of Los Angeles County who is experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 is eligible for testing. To get tested, an appointment is required. No walk-ups are allowed. To make an appointment, please register online at www.covid19.lacounty.gov/testing. If you do not have internet access to make an appointment, please call 211 for assistance. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santinas. Okay, item number nine, proclamation. So I wanted to announce that the city of Bellflower has proclaimed April as Fair Housing Month. In recognition of that, we have mailed out a proclamation to the Fair Housing Foundation. As you all know, normally we would conduct these in person, would have a ceremony, but in light of COVID-19, we are, we mailed the proclamation this time, so we do apologize that we're not doing it as a norm, but we hope to get there soon. We want to recognize the Fair Housing Foundation for all they do, especially right now, in light of, again, COVID-19, all they do to help our community in terms of addressing the housing needs that so many, not only in our community, but many communities need assistance with. And so with that, again, it's an honor for the city of Bellflower to recognize this month as Fair Housing Month. And the proclamation that was sent out to the Fair Housing Foundation was signed by Councilmember Sunny Santinas, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Ray Dutton, Mayor Pro Tem Coops, and myself, Mayor Garza. Again, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to item number 10, public comments. Mr. Stewart, please.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an item must utilize one of the best, one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart. Let me make an announcement. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature under the Participants tab in Zoom, or if by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. You will be called upon by the deputy city clerk in the order received. Your microphone will be then unmuted so that you can provide your comments. So with that, Madam City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make any public comments this evening?
Mayor, this is Karen. Let me just give the public a moment to use the raise hand feature.
Not a problem. Thank you so much, Madam Deputy City Clerk.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone at this time.
Okay, great. So with that, that completes item number 10. Let's move on to item number 11, which is public hearings. We have none this evening. Item 12, which is ordinances and resolutions for consideration, item 12A. Mr. Stewart?
This is consideration of possible action to introduce regular ordinance number 1387, amending the Bellflower Municipal Code to authorize recovery of costs incurred as a result of second responses to disturbances and public nuisances. This item is Mr. Berger, the city attorney, is time to shine, and I'll let him answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As stated in the staff report, this item came up last week during your special meeting with regards to Project Room Key. What's happened in the meantime is that, Mr. Stewart, or the mayor can probably lend more information if you want, the county has apparently been unable to reach an agreement with the hotel that was the subject of the discussion from last week. That said, I think it still behooves the city council to move forward with an ordinance that would allow the city to collect on second response costs, which is more specifically defined in the draft ordinance. The concept of this is that if there are multiple calls for service at a particular location or for a particular nuisance, the city is able to recoup its code enforcement or law enforcement costs associated with that particular nuisance. There's a process by which the property owner is informed or the person responsible for the nuisance is informed about what will happen if law enforcement needs to come back, and the city is able to recover its fully allocated hourly rate for its personnel when it does respond, along with any other costs. You'll see from the staff report that we've added in some definitions for extended stay hotels, for example, which requires that any leases that are entered into be up by those hotels or any other hotel, including the city's a third-party beneficiary to enable the city to try to recover its TOTs or any other enforcement costs. The idea behind this is to try to address the problem that the council identified last week with regard to Project Room Key, which is there's no legal means right now by which the city could try to recover its TOTs from, for example, the county, since the county as a governmental entity is exempt from paying taxes. One other thing that I wanted to point out to the council, which is mentioned in the staff report also, which is the so-called private attorney general section of the draft ordinance, which allows private citizens to try to file suit against particular public nuisances on the city's behalf. I'm happy to answer any questions. That's a very brief overview. There's more in the staff report, but this should gender some discretion. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Attorney. It's always great work. I think it's a great idea, but before I ask my questions, let me open it up to my colleagues. Let's start off with Councilmember Sunny Santinas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question to the city attorney. Can you confirm on the provision for private attorney general? Does the citizen of Bellflower needs to be injured to file a lawsuit on behalf of the city?
No. So if you go to that section, which is on page 13 of the ordinance, at the top of the page, it's actually section 1.14.280, subsection B. It's a code violations or a public nuisance constitute an unfair business practice that are presumed to nominally damage each and every resident of the community. There's a typo in there that we'll fix in the final version of this, damage rather than damages. Any person acting for the interest of him or herself or the general public may bring a civil action, including an action for injunctive relief to recover damages and prevent future violation. This language reflects what's also in state statute for private attorney general actions and allows a private individual to bring an action in the event that there's an identified public nuisance. That doesn't have to be the city, and the individual, him or herself, does not have to be specifically injured. It's brought on behalf of the community.
Councilmember Santinas, do you have any other questions? I think I see you're muted.
No, another question is when a lawsuit is filed by a private citizen, and he or she prevailed, does he or she benefit out of the civil damages?
So the damages themselves would be, yes, I mean, they can recover damages on behalf of the city, and they would be entitled to a recovery of attorney fees. If you look on that same page that I previously recommended you to, the subsection B, which talks about the prevailing party who can be able to recover attorney's fees. So the individual would be able to recover damages on behalf of the community, and under those circumstances, the city council would have to make a determination whether or not it wanted to partake in those damages. I'll say that practically speaking, at the state level called Queen Tam actions, that the individual is able to keep up with the percentage of whatever is recovered. That is not specifically written into the ordinance, and if the council were to want to do that, it would have to be explored or added into the ordinance. But yes, the individual and recognition of their ability to bring an action on behalf of the community is able to recover part of those damages, and certainly if they were to prevail, would also be able to recover their.
Okay, all right, very good. I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santinas. Up next, let's offer the opportunity to Mayor Pro Tem Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to, I want to thank Carl and his group for assembling this. It reminds me of what you were able to do in providing us protection when we did our canopus ordinance, and you're doing a good job of being proactive on trying to make sure that we don't get hurt. So I want to thank you for that. Now, what I do remember historically, and this is quite a few years ago, and it may be a whole different part of the ordinance, or it might even be an ordinance, but we used to have a deal whereby if you had, say, an alarm went off more than once, and then you got free service from the sheriff's department, and then if it went off again, and it was a false alarm, you got billed for it. And we had different kinds of activities that were meant to curtail people abusing the sheriff's deputies coming to their premise. Is that, is this totally independent of that? Does that still exist? Or is that, was that even an ordinance? Or was that something that we just put together to dissuade people from abusing it?
There, first of all, thank you very much for your kind words. Secondarily, there is a provision in the municipal code that allows for the city to recover what are called code enforcement fees. Those fees aren't defined in the municipal code, and based by my read of that particular section, I don't think it's adequate from a due process standpoint, nor does it add in the additional things that are, that this draft ordinance would do, which is to include, for example, the requirement that the city be added as a third-party beneficiary, add in the provision about private attorney general actions, and really broadly define what kinds of activities the city can recover from. What you're talking about, I think, is really more of a false alarm provision.
Right.
And I'm happy to pull up the municipal code, but when we were putting this ordinance together on Friday in response to the council's direction, I did not immediately see the false alarm provisions. But regardless, this ordinance would apply to any enforcement action within the city. So it wouldn't matter whether it was an alarm, or if it was a response to a public nuisance that's an ongoing eyesore, or any of those things would apply under this ordinance as opposed to being very specific to false alarms.
Okay, well, that's good. So this is a, this will cover all the eventualities of people being called out and us being able to recoup our lawsuits, correct?
That is correct.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem Coops. Next, let's go with Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Yeah, Carl and his team did a great job on the staff report to be able to pull this off. I think it was a little less, about less than 24 hours. And I agreed with it totally. I even sent him a comment that I did. I have, I don't foresee anything wrong with it, but it looks like it has as much teeth as we can get in it for all the things that we discussed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, first off, want to echo the appreciation to Carl and his team. They were quite thorough on this, and again, they were quite timely again. They always come through in a short amount of time that we, after we press it. So, but Carl, just, and the only thing I saw was maybe some minor things. And, you know, under definitions, the director is the city manager or its designee, and then where it starts on page 11 of 15, down at the bottom, 1.1420, the lien procedures, and then A, and then it uses the city manager or designee, and that still works, of course. But throughout most of the document, you have director. But what it does on the next page, kind of through just a little bit, under B on page 12 of 15, under subsection B there, it makes, it makes reference to, before recording the lien, the city manager or designee must submit a report to the director, which is the same person. Is that, so is that just something, some minor cleanup, or is that something you can explain under certain situations, or?
It actually should be the other way around.
All right, yeah.
Director must submit a report to the city manager.
Okay, all right. So it's just, it was just minor, that's all.
Yeah.
But overall, again, Carl, thank you for the work in something that definitely has worked out, I think, to our benefit here, and great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. I, I just want to echo the comments that my colleagues, colleagues have made regarding our city attorney, just doing a tremendous job considering the fluid situation that we all have with COVID-19, including this Project Room Key, and drafting this ordinance that is really proactive in trying to protect the city's interests and ensure that if we have to recover anything that's codified for us in our municipal code. So again, thank you so much, Mr. City Attorney, for your foresight on that. I can tell you that in speaking with other council members from throughout our region that have been reaching out to me regarding Project Room Key, and so when I share with them my opinion and my thoughts, and I bring this proposed ordinance up, 100% of them have actually been impressed with the fact that this is something they hadn't thought about, and the fact that we've thought about it here in Bellflower, but specifically you, has been a big source of pride for me on a personal level as a mayor, but I think for our city as well. So again, Mr. City Attorney, thank you so much for all your help.
Thank you.
Absolutely. They are earned. So just a bit of background for our public that is watching us this evening, that as the city attorney mentioned before, just briefly, the background on this, the impetus for this that started it all was our city being informed last week that there is a hotel in our city that was being targeted as a potential Project Room Key participant. Project Room Key, for those that are not aware of the project, is an effort by our governor and by extension the county of Los Angeles to try to, try to move as many of our homeless neighbors from the streets onto hotels as soon as possible, in hotels throughout the region in order to safeguard them and protect them from contracting COVID-19. And so as you might expect, once we got notified by the county, by our supervisor, Dennis Hahn, that our, one of our hotels was being targeted for that, it was important that we, as a city council, meet and discuss this item in full transparency, as we always do here in Bellflower, and just to have a conversation. And so we did that last Thursday during a special council meeting, and so this, that's the reason why we're here today for this. Now, since then, I am, I am here to report that we got word, after our council meeting, around two hours after our council meeting ended, we got word from our supervisor, Dennis Hahn, or staff, that the negotiations between our governor's office and our local motel here, Motel Six, had fallen through, which meant that Project Room Key was not going to be coming to that specific motel in our city. And so, as I mentioned during our special council meeting on Thursday, it was tentative, but again, in the interest of just making sure that we're transparent with the community, that we felt it was necessary to meet, again, even though it was temporary at that point, tentative at that point. So again, the update is that it's no longer tentative, it's not in consideration anymore due to influencing things outside of our city's control, but nonetheless, it's important that we continue with this mechanism, which is relevant and applicable, not just to that situation, but I think situations going forward. So again, kudos to our city attorney for thinking of that. And just a general comment that, again, other cities are looking to see what we're doing here. And my last comment is with regards to the homeless. As everyone knows, and it's been in the news, Bellflower is doing the right thing in terms of our homeless, in terms of working with our partners to address the homeless. I went on record during our last council meeting, our special council meeting, that I was in support of Project Room Key myself, and it's intent and its efforts. And so while the project won't happen in our city, I am just really proud of the fact that our city nonetheless is literally weeks away from opening our own homeless shelter up here in our city. So we are proud of that, and so stay tuned for that. So but nonetheless, for this one, Mr. City Attorney, at this point in time, my questions were answered, and so again, I thank you for your time. And so with that, if there's no other questions from the council, I'd like to open it up for any public comments that we may have, Madam Deputy City Clerk.
Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone wishing to present public comment.
Okay, great. So with that, my colleagues on the city council, any final questions or comments of any member of our staff, including our city attorney regarding this item? All right, hearing none, is there somebody that would like to make a motion regarding item 12A?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for the city council of Bellflower, of city of Bellflower to introduce ordinance number 1387, an ordinance adding a new chapter, 1.14, to the Bellflower Municipal Code 12, to recover costs incurred as a result of second responses to unwilling gatherings, disturbances, and nuisances, and wait further reading.
Second, okay, great. I have a motion by Councilmember Santinas, and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Thank you, gentlemen. A roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Yes.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move on to item 13A. As I mentioned before, we will be considering item 13A at the end of the council meeting, the last item. So with that, let's move on to item number 14, our consent calendar. Are there any items for my colleagues that they would like to pull from the consent calendar?
Mayor Garza?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is Ray Dutton. Hey, I wanted to just make a comment. On 14D, I do own property within 1,000 feet of Clevers Park, and there apparently is no conflict because it's over 500. That's all I needed to disclose. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. And I should have done that first. So is there anybody else on the city council that has any recusals or conflicts regarding any items in our consent calendar?
Yeah, this is Mayor Pro Tem Coops. Just for safety's sake, I'm going to recuse myself from 14E.
So 14E, Mr. Coops is recusing himself, not a problem. Any other recusals? So hearing none, any items that any of my colleagues would like to be pulled or separately considered, or have any questions on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, just a, just a quick comment on 14C?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just great news again, we had heard, and we just want to welcome the city of Paramount to the Solaco Workforce Development Board.
Great. That's a big, that's a big one. Yes, Councilmember Santinas?
In addition to 14C, I'd like to also pull 14D, 14E, and 14F, just for comments and questions.
So 14D, 14E, and 14F, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I've got those in there. And so, Mr. City Attorney says 14E is one of the items that, that Councilmember Santinas pulled for, for comments. Is that something that Councilmember Mayor Protem Coops has to recuse? I mean, be in a separate room for, or just because it's only a comment, is it okay for him to be in the room for?
An abundance of caution that the clerk's office is able to do it. I believe there's a function for breakout rooms to allow him to either be in the breakout room or the waiting room while you're discussing this particular item.
Okay, great. So, and that's just for a general comment. And we have to deal with what? So I do have, so I'm going to be pulling item 14A and 14F for general comments and questions, but not separate consideration, like for a separate vote. So why don't we go over these items, and I'll leave 14E. I'm going to pull 14E for separate voting consideration at the end, if that's okay with Councilmember Santinas.
Whatever, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So why don't we handle the consent calendar in full, except for item 14E? So I'm going to separate that for second consideration and separate vote at this point in time. So, so on item 14, let me go off in order in terms of the consent calendar item order. And so 14A is a question from me. So on item 14A, which is our warrants, my question is, I noticed that there is a line item in there for, for a crossing guard services. In light of the fact that our school district right now is not active, would there be any member of our staff, I'm not sure, Mr. Ree, or maybe Mr. Huckman, that would be able to kind of inform us as to whether that's a commitment that we have to continue to pay for, if we're obligated to? Or is that something that we would not have to pay for in light of the current circumstances of school being out?
Mr. Mayor, this is Joel. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good. I didn't have a chance to test before the meeting. Yeah. As soon as the crossing guard function was no longer needed, that was canceled for the time being. And I let Tay know, it was about the only good piece of financial news he's heard in a long time. So we did stop paying at the time of no longer getting any service.
Okay, that's great. And I'm sure Mr. Ree definitely appreciated that, considering the fluid situation right now. So, okay, great. Thank you so much for answering that question. So let's move on to, again, in order, item 14D from Mr. Councilmember Santinas.
About 14C. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sorry.
Let me, let me allow Mr. Hamada, because he was the first one to pull it.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. Again, I just pulled this just to provide that brief comment. Again, I want to welcome the City of Paramount, again, our friends through the West, to the Selaco, again, Workforce Development Board. Again, the group grows, and hopefully, things get done. So looking forward to that relationship. Thank you.
Not a problem. Yeah, and I know you had a lot of work in that, and I know Councilmember Santinas did as well. So again, that's great, great news. Okay, item 14D, Mr. Santinas.
Let me also, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like also to make a comment on 14C.
Absolutely, please.
Okay, so I'd like to echo the comments made by Councilmember Hamada to welcome the City of Paramount. And last, last Tuesday, the City of Paramount voted 5-0 to accept the agreement, that's the GP agreement with the Selaco Web. And as you recall, Selaco Web, W, Workforce Development Board, consists of, currently consists of seven cities, Artesia, Bellflower, Cervitos, Downey, Hawaiian Gardens, Lakewood, and Norwalk. And currently, we serve 450,000 residents in our area. With the addition of the City of Paramount, we will now exceed the threshold of half a million residents, because they have about 56,000 residents in the City of Paramount. And that's a big thing, because a number of grants are only made available to workforce development boards who serve residents in excess of half a million. So that's a big thing. In addition, we are already currently serving some residents of the City of Paramount. For example, as of, for this current fiscal year, as of the, the end of March, Selaco Web served 12,000 residents, and out of the 12,230 already reside in the City of Paramount. So we're serving them already. And, and with Paramount joining the Selaco Development Board, the money that used to be going to the county of LA will now be going to our area. So that's a big thing. And it's also a, there's also a lot of synergy between us, when I say us, the seven cities, and the City of Paramount already exists. For example, we're all members of the Gateway Cog. And so a lot of project, joint projects that we do with the City of Paramount. So the target date right now is for them to officially begin servicing Paramount as of July 1st. And as far as I know, we are the second city who are considering this resolution to approve the joint powers, the revised joint powers agreement admitting Paramount to the Selaco Workforce Development Board. So on behalf of the city, the city council, I'd like to welcome the City of Paramount to the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board.
That's fantastic.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question of Sunny.
Yes, sir.
So Sunny, will this involve increasing the staff at the web office to accommodate the addition of Paramount?
Oh, possibly. And not only, not only staff, we may also add additional pilot location. Because as you know, right now, the locations are in Cervitos and Norwalk. And if there's an opportunity, I'm already eyeing somewhere in the vicinity of Downey, Paramount, and Belleflower, along Lakewood Boulevard, somewhere in that area. So the weekend is going to be a triangle service area that we can provide service to our residents.
All right, that's good. Thank you for the answer. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Santinas regarding item 14D? Great, thank you so much. And Councilmember Hamada as well, both, both you gentlemen for all your efforts. So let's move on to, we're going to skip item 14E right now, and let's move on to item 14F, which myself and Councilmember Santinas pulled. I'll start off with Councilmember Santinas.
Item 14D, Mr. Mayor.
14, you know what?
14D.
14D. We are on 14D. Yeah, I checked it out and I really hear something. My bad. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I asked Director Public Works and Assistant City Manager, Deputy City Manager Glenn Gurecki, if he's got some pictures of the fencing that we are envisioning for the Crowthers Park security fencing. So Mr. Gurecki, if you have something to show to our pub, to the public, so that at least they have some kind of visual idea of what's going to, how it's going to look like. I believe it's muted. Oh, there you go.
There it is.
All right.
Isn't this a direct immediate?
Can someone unmute him?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, there you go.
There we go. Let me back up real quick. So basically, what we have here, a couple of pictures of the existing chain link fence at Crowthers Park that was around the, the two to five-year-old lot in the waiting pool that we had there. This was obviously taken out as part of the project that we're doing there. And with the project, with Caltrans is, with the grant funds from Caltrans, they would only pay for the replacement of what was there, which was the chain link fence. We had looked at possibly going to the tubular steel fence, which we have here at Thompson Park, as an upgrade for us over there. So we would be responsible for the difference in the cost, which is approximately a little over $45,000 to this project. So that's essentially what we would do, is we would get rid of the chain link that would be going around the new play area in the splash fountain that proposed for others park, and be replacing it with the wrought iron fence that you see here.
Thank you, Mr. Gurecki. Mr. Santinas?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Gurecki. And I pulled this item so that we can share how we envision the park's going to look like, because technically speaking, we will be getting a brand-new park at Crowthers Park. And it would be a shame to be, to be using chain link fence to surround that area. So I think it's a good idea to, for our residents to see how it's going to look like, what is completed. So again, kudos to the staff and the leadership of Public Works for bringing this up. I think it's money well spent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Santinas. It's a great poll. And I think, to your point, it just, it shows a community that this is great. So, thank you. Any, any other comments or questions from any of my colleagues regarding item 14D?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gurecki, are we getting some sort of credit for the chain link expense that they're not providing?
Yeah, yes, we are. They're, they're applying the 14,000, which was the value of putting a brand-new chain link back to the full cost of the wrought iron fence. So the difference to us is a little over $45,000 to add the wrought iron fence.
I was hoping it would be 31,000 with 14 off 45.
I wish wrought iron was that cheap.
No, this is, this is a long-term investment. This is something that's going to be there 50 years. So we need to do it right. And I agree with your decision.
It's a great question, Mayor. What time?
And plus, my kids, my, my grandkids will swim in that pool.
Absolutely. Any other questions regarding item 14D? Okay. And thank you, Mr. Councilmember Santinas, for bringing me up. I checked things off on my end over here, and I, I was a little confused. But thank you for putting me on the right track there. So that was item 14D. We're going to skip our item 14D for now, and item 14F. Councilmember Santinas.
Thank you, Mayor. And when I, when I was looking at the agenda, I, I kind of thought that I should pull this item to basically ask the question regarding what kind of procedures are we going to report to the operators regarding social distancing and protecting equipment, things like that. And lo and behold, today, the city clerk has sent us a copy of a public comment from TNT. So I know how you want to handle this. It answers part of my question, but it brought another question in my part.
Now, that's a good point. And I actually, I myself pulled this item off, item 14F, in order to give our city clerk an opportunity to make official comments on the record regarding the submission of comments. So with that, I will hand it off to our honorable city clerk.
We did receive several comments prior to the meeting, so if you'll bear with me for a few minutes while I read those into the record for you. The first received was from John Kelly from TNT Fireworks. And he states, "As the city discusses approval of permits for the July 2020 for fireworks sales, please be aware of the physical distancing protocols developed by TNT Fireworks." And he attached those protocols. They are too lengthy to read into the record, but they are posted on our website and have been shared with the council as well. The next comment received was from James Gunter. He states, "My name is Jim Gunter. I am the chairman of the board for the Bellflower Long Beach Elks Lodge 888. I write to request the permits for this year's fireworks stand to be approved. This year especially, our lodge is in need of this financial help. The fireworks sales are our largest financial gain of the year. After all of this downtime, we at the Elks have lost a lot of revenue to an already struggling lodge. Over the past few years of the city's changes to our parking, we have had a drastic loss of revenue. Again, I request the city approve the permits for this year's sale of fireworks." The third comment is provided by Karen Olson. She states, "My name is Karen Olson. I am the church secretary writing on behalf of Full Gospel Church. I write to request the permits for this year's fireworks stand be approved. This year especially, our church children's education is in need of this financial help. The fireworks sale are our largest financial gain of the year. After all of this downtime, we at the church have lost a lot of revenue and struggling. Again, I request the city approve the permits for this year's sale of fireworks." The fourth comment comes from Jason Fries. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. He states, "My name is Jason Fries. I am a youth pastor at Bellflower Brethren Church. I would like to share my support for the fireworks permits to be approved. We expect that with the current safer-at-home policy, that this will make an impact on our church's finances and make it harder for us to serve our church, community, and youth. The fireworks stand has been one of our biggest fundraisers and could be a way for the city to celebrate not the end of the coronavirus, but hopefully a time when we can get back to some degree of normalcy." And I believe after this, there was an additional comment received, and that would need to be read into the record by Deputy City Clerk Karen Avery.
Yes, the last email that we received is from Sean and Heather Waters. It says, "My name is Heather Waters. My husband and I are the chairpeople for the, for the United Pentecostal Church and Golden West Preschool. Our church and our preschool are in dire need of financial help. The fireworks stand brings in the largest amount of profit for the year. After all of this stay-at-home time, our finances have really been hit, especially for the preschool who have had to lower attendance dramatically. I would like to request the city to approve the permits for fireworks sales for the year 2020. Thank you, Sean and Heather Waters." And that's the last email that we've received.
And Mayor, just for the record, all of these comments were forwarded directly to the city council and posted on our website for the public to view.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk and Madam Deputy City Clerk. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Councilmember Santinas?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so when I pulled this item, my concern, I really appreciate the comments made by the operators of those fireworks stand. And I mean, I'm in support of providing them the opportunity to sell fireworks. But my question to staff is that if they've analyzed and reviewed the, the comments or procedures that were submitted by Mr. John Kelly of TNT?
None of the recommendations, Mr. Mayor, have been implemented yet. I would think the comments came in late in the game, and we'll look at the comments for next year's, before we go through next year's process.
Okay, but for this year, can we require the operators to maintain those kinds of social distancing?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, you could, you could do that if you, if you wanted to.
I believe that in the comments that were made by the representative for TNT, I believe they were in there of how they were doing social distancing. Am I incorrect in saying that? I thought I read them.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, that's what I, I saw.
Yeah, I mean, I want to make sure that you follow the county's guidelines on that. And I would defer to those and maintain the six-feet distance and whatever cash handling issues they may have or otherwise. But, yeah, we
And whatever cash handling issues they may have or otherwise, but uh, yeah, we could certainly implement those.
Do we need to include that in the uh, in the permit given to the operators or basically we can assume that they will, they will comply with the county's guidelines?
I would include it in the permit to make it enforceable.
Okay, very good. That's my question. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I may?
Absolutely.
Um, I just wanna note that the comments that were received was from TNT Fireworks. They are contracted with uh, twelve of our fourteen fireworks stands. And there's two other fireworks stands that are contracted with Phantom Fireworks. So I just wanted to enter that into the record that if these comments from TNT um, do become conditions, then it would be applicable to, to all the permit holders.
Yeah, Ms. Corpus, is there a way, I mean, I'm sitting here looking at this, we've taken comment on this. Is there a way to ensure that all those guidelines uh, concur with the counties and the state's recommendations of social distancing? I don't wanna get too far into our skis. And the question I have for you is, is there a way we could pull this item for two weeks? And then approve it in two weeks? Is that upsetting anybody's timeframe on that? We can include these standards in there for the permits?
Yes, we can still do that. Um, we do like to take it forward in April just to give the operators uh, plenty of time. If it's delayed two weeks, they still have over a month to get all of their ducks in a row before they um, are okay to start putting the booth up, which is.
We can let them know that, that the list has been approved. But we want to uh, make sure the council's vetted the guidelines that we're gonna include with the permits that's issued. And I'd like to, I think we should do that.
So Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Manager, so you're requesting that we pull item fourteen G for consideration at the next meeting?
Or, or we could bifurcate the item. You could approve the list as is, so they know they're gonna go forward. And then we could um, and, and include the social distancing issues that the council wanted and bring it back at the next meeting.
That's the way to go.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Just to, to, for clarity for our city clerk and for the record. So, okay.
Right. Beth, do you understand that? Do you agree with that? Are you good with that?
I'm good with that. That gives us plenty of time to go through uh, their recommendations and, and also take a look at the county order.
I don't think that the applicants will care about that. It's still two weeks for the social distancing. As long as they know they're gonna get their permit.
Yeah, it's approved the permits with uh, with uh, social distancing requirements coming at you.
Yep.
Hey Jeff, uh, does, has John Kelly made arrangements to do his? He always brings everybody to Sims Park, all of his operators, to tell them how to operate. Is that still on the books?
I would presume I've not heard differently. And it's been a longstanding practice of his, so.
It's, it's more of an online thing is what I heard.
Okay, but I know historically he used to use the park.
Yeah, but they can't, they can't get together.
No, I get it. But I, that's another reason for us to go ahead and approve this thing so he can move forward with his other parts.
Mayor, if I could, this is PJ. I just wanna say that uh, they are not planning their training at Sims Park due to the closures of the park. Uh, but they are making alternative arrangements for those trainings.
All right. Thank you for that information. Councilmember Santiness, since you pulled the item, any other questions or comments here?
That may, may, uh, my questions were answered. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Great. Thank you for pulling that item. Obviously uh, it had a little bit of work. So thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Ray wants to go ahead.
I was just gonna move the consent calendar as discussed.
Oh, okay. Let's hold off on that one. Thank you though. Uh, Councilmember Hamada?
Uh, yeah, just quickly, uh, again, for the sake of disclosure, um, I'm a member of the Board of, Board of Directors for the Bellflower Quanis Club and Foundation. And they are one of the listed uh, you know, uh, permits, just to FYI. I'm a volunteer, of course, and the usual applies.
Absolutely. No, thank you so much for, for that as well, Councilmember Hamada. Madam City Clerk, do you have any other questions or comments regarding uh, what was discussed right now on item fourteen F? Okay, great. So uh, so gentlemen, before you, you have items fourteen A through fourteen D and items fourteen F through fourteen I. Is there somebody who'd like to make a motion regarding those items?
I'll move it. Coops will move it, the consent calendar. But I'm making sure that we uh, include sunny suggestions on the uh, social distancing's on the fireworks stand.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. I have a motion. Is there somebody who'd like to make a second?
I have a second motion.
So I have a motion by Mayor Proton Coops, a second by Councilmember Santiness. Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Coops?
Hi.
Councilmember Dutton?
Hi.
Councilmember Hamada?
Hi.
Councilmember Santiness?
Hi.
Mayor Garza?
Hi.
Great. Thank you so much for that, gentlemen. Uh, so now we, what I'd like to do um, out of respect for Mayor Proton Coops, what I'd like to ask is our city manager to read off uh, two items right now and uh, and that would be item fourteen E and then item thirteen A. And then uh, after that, Mayor Proton Coops will get an opportunity to make some comments. And then after that, we can go into the items. Um, so if Mr. City Attorney, is that, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Garza, you want fourteen E or fourteen A first?
So it would be, if you can read both items, fourteen E and thirteen A in succession.
Gotcha. Fourteen E is consideration possible action adopt resolution number twenty-nine teen, a resolution amending the operating budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty twenty to provide funding for the installation of perimeter fence and gates at Constitution Park. Approving the specifications for installation of perimeter fencing gates at Constitution Park pursuant to government code eight, eight three oh point six and establishing a project payment account and authorized solicitation of bids.
Thank you. And then item thirteen A.
Thirteen A is, as the construction is finalized, I'm sorry, consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to execute agreement file number eight-six-nine and a form approved by the city attorney with James Carey for mural design and painting services in the Bellflower temporary shelter or the new home.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart. Uh, is, are there any members of the city council that uh, have a conflict or would like to recuse themselves out of item fourteen E and thirteen A?
Mr. Mayor, this is Dan Coops. And I do have a conflict on a property within distance. So I'll uh, be recusing myself from those two items. And at this point, I will uh, refuse myself the entire meeting. Say good night to everybody.
Thank you so much, Mayor Proton Coops. Have a wonderful evening, sir.
Thank you.
All right. And I'll wait for the city clerk to uh, clear us that uh, Mr. Coops is off the line.
Mr. Coops has left the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. All right, fourteen E. Mr. Stewart has already read the item off, so I'll go back to uh, Councilmember Santiness who pulled this item.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to the other item on Crowder's Park, I, I asked Mr. Gurecki to show um, the rendering for the uh, for the fencing of Constitution Park. And I'd like to make a comment that um, I, I should recall uh, Constitution Park had some issues in the past. And um, I really wanna thank the uh, our staff of the safety uh, but um, uh, Public Works and Parks and Recreation for their vigilance in addressing those uh, loitering in the area. But that's only a temporary solution. We want a more permanent solution. And I commend our staff, that by our city manager, for having the, the foresight to come up with an idea to provide um, more permanent fencing uh, around Constitution Park. And um, and I'm also, I'm also uh, very pleased that um, we have the finances under the um, Park Facilities Fund uh, where the money's gonna be coming from so that um, these fans can be paid for. So with that, I'd like to ask again, Mr. Lynn Gurecki, by talking to earlier today, to show some rendering of the uh, the um, the consultant design of the fencing so that our residents can, can see how we envision this fencing's gonna look like.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santiness. Uh, Mr. Gurecki?
All right. Can you guys hear me this time around?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let me see if the, uh, they'll let, they'll share the screen for me real quick. All right. Real quick. All right. So the, the renderings that we have are, are more like the site plan. What, what we did here is we went over to Monty Verdi Park in Lakewood. Uh, because this is the exact fence that we're looking at installing around the portions of a Constitution Park to make it more secure. The only difference that uh, between this fence and our fence would be the color. Our fence uh, is slated to be black, whereas this one is the uh, the forest green. So this is uh, uh, what the look is over at Monty Verdi Park. There's another view of it. And so this is the type of fence that would be going up at Constitution Park. And then real quick, these are the areas where it would be going. We're dovetailing into the existing fencing uh, that Edison has up. And as well as the private property uh, lines too. Uh, so this is the section nearest Cedar Street. Um, and the yellow, the highlighted yellow depicts where the fence would be. The blue area is a vehicle gate and then the orange area would be a lockable pedestrian gate. And then also down on the Rose Street side, uh, similar, the yellow will highlight the, the area where the fence will be. The blue represents the vehicle gate and then the uh, orange represents where the locked pedestrian gate would be.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Gurecki. Is, is that complete your, your comments right now?
Yeah, those are, those are the photos and the layout that we have for it.
Okay, great. Uh, Councilmember Santiness?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gurecki. That's a very nice presentation. A couple of questions. Once operational, uh, what time will the, will the gates be open for people to access the park?
I'll, I'll defer that one to PJ real quick. Um, I, I'm not sure the operating hours, how he would establish that and stuff.
As Mayor and members of the city council, uh, at the moment, it's uh, dusk to dawn right now. Um, we, we will reevaluate that. We're gonna have to look at uh, logistics and um, public safety or public work staff that'll be able to open and close, plus the weekends um, with those vehicles. So we'll, we'll reevaluate it. At the moment, it's dusk to dawn and um, I, I think that'll be the start and then we'll evaluate it as we go.
Okay, good. And, and one, one final question. What, once the um, the project is awarded to the um, weeding contractor, uh, what kind of, what kind of timeframe are we looking at in terms of construction?
Well, we'll get a better idea once we do the, uh, we put out the, the RFP for the, uh, for the work. We do the job walk. Typically, we'll ask that the uh, the gates sit around a, anywhere from a ninety to a hundred and twenty day install period from when the contract starts. It usually gives them plenty of time. It's a good starting point for us. Um, I'm not sure what the lead time is on the manufacturing of, of that fencing. But uh, we'll address it with them when we do the pre-construction uh, walkthrough with everybody. And I'll be more than happy to report that back to the council on what the timeline will be.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for all the work you do to make this um, park secure. That completes my question, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santiness. Uh, are there any other questions or comments from uh, any of the members of the city council from Mr. Gurecki on item fourteen E?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick ones. Uh, again, the fence is a, looks like a high quality. It's definitely a thicker gauge and it's, and it's sectional. So I think when repairs and forth, they can pull off a section the way it looks by the specs. Each, each section of fence between posts could be pulled off and, and then replaced. So I think down the road for uh, uh, maintenance, uh, I think it works better than a one full length and trying to cut it and so on and, and work it out. So, so again, uh, this fence, uh, to me has a good country look to it too. So definitely uh, it's gonna fit well. Okay, thank you, Lynn. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Dutton?
Yeah, I just had one comment on the color. I know while black was gonna be it, cause it matches an existing black. Um, but the wrought iron black fences there is all down one side. I don't know if, I'm just throwing this out there, would, would a green fence be less intrusive? Would it look like, something like jail bars, so to speak? I'm just putting it on the table. I can go either way.
I, I actually, I was gonna ask the same question, Councilmember. I, I did, I, I'm, I'm not sure the price that we have is regard, it's with a black in mind. I know there's a different price point for the green, but I think the green just looks more inviting.
It does, yeah.
Yeah. But that's my opinion. I'm not sure. I'll, I'll let Mr. Gurecki answer that question.
Okay.
As far as price point, um, I'm, I'm not sure that there's any difference uh, with, with the color of the fencing. We, we can check with manufacturer and, and see what the color palette is. Our, our thought was just to match the black out there that's already there with the, with the Edison wrought iron. But uh, we certainly can take a look at um, the colors that's available and, and, and have some options for the council.
Any thoughts on that, Councilmember Hamada?
I can go either way. Uh, yes, the green uh, definitely goes along better with the park possibly.
Councilmember Santiness?
Yeah, well, I, I prefer the green. Um, but uh, if we, if we take the green for the new one, uh, can we repaint the existing wrought iron fence from black to green? So it's all color match?
We could ask Edison if they would allow us to do that, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. And why don't we, if, if we're all in uh, um, spirit of going green, why don't we vote on a green fence and then let's see what it looks like. We can always come back and see if we need to paint the Edison fence.
I'm, I'm, I'm in, so. Great. So any other further questions or comments uh, from my, my council colleagues regarding fourteen, item fourteen E? All right. So hearing none, uh, is there somebody who'd like to make a motion regarding item fourteen E?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I have a motion. I have a motion by Councilmember Santiness, a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Member Dutton?
Hi.
Councilmember Hamada?
Hi.
Yes.
Hi.
Great. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And as we're moving on to item thirteen A, just a just a quick uh, FYI for the local community that um, this is just one investment in that park that, as the city council has promised. I know that there's lighting uh, that is also in the works uh, and security cameras as well that we've asked our staff to look into. So um, there's more improvements coming to that park. So with that, item thirteen A, I know that that's already been read by our city manager, but I will hand it off to our city manager for presentation.
What we have here is uh, with, upon naming the structure and we have determined, we, we got the, the notification of what the name would be last week when the, the voting was finalized. And we've been working with local artists on providing some uh, some kind of an entryway um, uh, mural design for the folks entering the building off the main entrance. And we didn't wanna be too crazy about it. We wanna have something that was colorful that adds something otherwise to a very stark and white building. And with that, there's a lesser and smaller mural design. And the back half and the common area, the, the, next to the prepared food area there uh, where people will congregate, charge phones, eat and things like that. And we thought these two designs were appropriate and bringing them forward to the city council. I believe Randy has a rendering that she can show you. But do you have that, Randy?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, council members and city manager Amika, my hero Ruiz, is going to go ahead and share her screen and present that.
Yes, so have at it.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me, Chloe?
Good evening.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and city council members. I have a PowerPoint here just to show what um, is being looked at for the New Hope. Let me make sure this works. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I'm trying to enter full screen mode. Hang on just one second. Um, oh, here we go. Okay. Um, for the Bellflower TSS now named New Hope, we looked at um, some other murals that existed. Santa Ana's murals kind of reflected the community. It also had a nice touch of the Twenty-Eight Stars painted uh, to represent the days built. Anaheim, um, so. Anaheim, um, selected a mural in their family area, um, with a quote from Maya Angelou, um, and a little receiving hand, something a little colorful and bright for the families. Um, for New Hope, we were talking with James Carey, the muralist, and he came up with a symbol of hope using a tree. Um, he thought about the way the branches curved, which may represent different people's paths. And since the wall is on the west, it kind of is a sunset, maybe the start of a new day. Um, complimentary, he put up a coffee cup and something to complement the first room as something just relaxing in that common room area. James is a local muralist, has total cost for the project is fifty-six hundred. And the staff recommends, moving forward, alternatively discuss and, uh, take other action. And that's the end of my presentation.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation, Amika. Uh, to any, uh, any questions from my city council colleagues? Let's start off with, uh, Councilmember Ray Dutton.
I like what I see. It's as simple and, uh, gets right to the point, and, you know, it is a temporary shelter, so. I think it works perfect, and the new name works great. I like it.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, hope's a powerful word, and, uh, definitely, uh, everybody needs it, so, um, uh, I was wondering, uh, again, how the artist came up with the tree and, and his thought pattern, and it was very similar. What I saw was, was it immature tree with, uh, starting with, uh, looking like, uh, you know, roots. Roots can also grow, and, and, and with the, uh, new, uh, branches, and definitely, uh, and trees go in all different directions, so, and, uh, hopefully, uh, everybody, uh, gets an opportunity, gets a chance at, at something, and, and it could take them to a, uh, to a next step, so. Definitely nice and colorful. Uh, uh, when I saw it, it, it definitely will brighten up the, uh, the facility, so. Good.
Yeah. Great, great, Councilmember Hamada, and I love that name, so, um, Councilmember Santez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just impressed with the muralist in, uh, to be able to come up with this great idea. It kind of reflects what we're trying to do, and I, I think the, uh, the message here is very powerful. It's a new beginning, and, uh, that ray of sunshine, I think, kind of reflects that, so. Uh, goodness to the staff for even, for being able to reach out to this artist, and I think it will come out really nice. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Santez. I, I echo everyone's comments. I think it's, it looks really nice. It's, it's simple, but it's good, and it, and it just captures everything, and it's in line with what we've seen in some of the other shelters that we visited, right, that, uh, to Amika's presentation. I know that in Costa Mesa, they have one as well, so it's a running theme, and, uh, so I'm happy that ours has its own brand as well. So, and I think, uh, I like this as well, so. Uh, so, thank you, Amika, for the presentation, and members and my colleagues on the council. Uh, let's open it up for any public comments, uh, so I hand it off to our Madam City Clerk and Deputy City Clerk.
Okay, Mayor, let me just, um, give the public a moment to use the feature.
Not a problem.
I'm not seeing anyone wishing to present public comments.
Great. Thank you so much, Mad, uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk. So with that, I'll bring it back to, uh, my colleagues. Any final questions or comments from anybody in the city council? All right, so hearing none.
I'll make a motion.
Please, sir.
Ray Dutton here, uh, authorize the city manager to execute the agreement eight six nine in the form approved by the city attorney, and then to also approve the, uh, budget amendment for the fiscal year nineteen, two thousand and twenty, to establish the allocation of fifty-six hundred dollars for the project account zero two zero dash four seven zero two four dash eight zero one zero from the public arts funds.
Wait about a second, Dan.
Great, so I have a motion by Councilmember Dutton, a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Hi.
Councilmember Hamada?
Hi.
Councilmember Santiness?
Yes.
Mayor Garza?
Hi.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. So we'll move on to item number fifteen, council reports. Uh, let's start off with Councilmember Dutton.
I don't have much to say other than I think this, uh, warmer, uh, week that we're having is a good thing. And with that, uh, stay cool, don't overheat yourself. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton. Uh, Councilmember Hamada?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I, I think we all know that food insecurity is real, and, uh, definitely, people are stepping forward, and, uh, as it's sad that seeing people seeking out, uh, food, but again, I wanted to, uh, you know, congratulate the Los Cerritos YMCA. Starting its sixth week of, of, uh, of food distribution, so, uh, thirteen hundred food packs, and that equates to twenty-six hundred meals daily. We're on the move, uh, possibly to up that number to two thousand food packs, so we're just kind of waiting to see. The numbers keep, uh, growing, and, uh, hopefully, the food's there to, uh, be passed out. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. Uh, Councilmember Santez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to welcome back Ricky's Italian Restaurant. They reopened last Monday, and I believe that, uh, Councilmember Hamad and I were the first customers. We were there by noon, uh, to pick up our orders. Uh, again, maintaining social distancing and wearing our facial covers, so we're okay. Um, I, I have some kind of mixed emotion with this kind of, with this kind of weather, because, uh, from my understanding is the, uh, the warmer temperature, um, basically, uh, will probably take care of the coronavirus. But at the same time, being a member of the, uh, greater Los Angeles County Petro District, it kind of, um, opens up another issue, uh, with warmer matters, weathers, and that is mosquito. So I just want to remind our residents, um, that to please don't let our guard down. Warmer weathers and, um, standing water in the backyard is a, is a formula for, uh, mosquito to breed. So please, clean up your backyards, any standing water, you cans, tires, and whatever it is, uh, to please take care of them so that, um, we will not switch from one issue to another. So with that, uh, I'll thank him, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff, uh, for, um, getting this meeting organized.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santez for that. Uh, you know, I am, uh, I'm gonna make three comments. The first one is regarding, uh, there, I know that, uh, the longer that COVID nineteen continues to go, it's, obviously, it's challenging for all of us, um, and the longer that it keeps going, it's, keeps getting more and more challenging. The food insecurity that, uh, Councilmember Hamada mentioned before is real. Um, but I also, uh, I think our city, and I think I could speak for my colleagues on the city council, that, uh, we feel the pain as well for our small business owners in our city, um, that are, uh, unfortunately suffering from this as well, and so. Uh, a- as much as it pains me to say this, though, that, um, that until our LA County Public Health Officer lifts the current, um, COVID nineteen restrictions, I just want to remind our businesses and our residents that, uh, that is a law. Uh, we have to abide by them. I am praying that we get past them here as soon as possible, uh, because I, again, I, I understand, uh, the sensitivity, I understand the pain. Uh, but again, just a friendly reminder that, that, uh, that if you are not considered an essential business, please do not open. Um, uh, I beg you, because, uh, I, I don't think any of us wants to go, uh, any further steps regarding enforcing those laws right now, so. Uh, with that, again, thank you for your participation and your support today, and, uh, I think our numbers, the fact that we have thankfully, numbers that are, uh, of, of residents are the ones that are suffering from COVID nineteen are not as high as some of our neighboring cities. I think we are blessed, and I think that's a reflection of how much our residents and our businesses are doing to, uh, control those numbers, so to that, I thank you and I commend you. Uh, my second comment is regarding item, uh, me regarding, uh, the Motel Six item that I touched on before. I just wanted to, uh, reiterate, just to give a special thanks to Supervisor Han and her, her deputies, Linda Johnson and Ivan Solik, for all their work in communicating with our city, uh, despite the fact that it was a tentative, uh, that, that Motel Six here was gonna be a participant in that, nonetheless, they did share with us ahead of time, so with that, uh, again, a special thanks to Supervisor Han for, for all she does for our city. She is a great partner of our city. Um, and so, uh, we look forward to, to continued, uh, great relationship with her and her leadership and her support of our city. And, and last but not least, um, Councilmember Hamada touched on the food insecurity, uh, item before. So on April twenty-two, um, he and I, uh, along with our Planning Commission Chair Victor Sanchez, uh, collaborated with Carrying Connections to, uh, uh, feed many, many families in our city that are in need of food. Um, and again, it's just one example. I know that Councilmember Hamada himself participates in the YMCA uh, distribution on a daily basis, along with other volunteers as well. I know that, um, BUSD board member Laura Ramirez and Renita Armstrong do as well, but, um, the reason I wanted to mention that is that the, that one case in point, the example of April twenty-two, um, that would not have happened if it wasn't uh, for the introduction to that group, uh, of, by the bridge that Mayor Solanke in the City of Cerritos made. Uh, so again, Mayor and the rest of Solanke from the City of Cerritos is the one that actually reached out to me as a co-mayor to inform us of a, a, a really special group in our city that wanted to contribute, uh, and, uh, be a part of the solution with food insecurity in our community. And so it just goes to show that the strong partnership and the, the neighborliness that we as cities have with each other. And so with that, I want to thank Mayor Solanke and, uh, City of Cerritos for, again, being a great neighbors to the city of Bellflower and for introducing us to some special people that just wanted to help our community and that are, that are in our community already, so to that, thank you, Mayor Solanke. And so with that, that completes my comments. Um, and so I'll make one last round. If there's any further questions or comments from any of my colleagues on the city council? All right, so hearing none, uh, I am adjourning this meeting. I am adjourning to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council, uh, that will take place at five thirty PM on Monday, May eleven, twenty twenty. It is eight twenty-four by my watch, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.